Slow, and it is council time. Rule call, Mr. Clark. Ames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Crowell.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Patton.
Yes.
Tuchel.
Yes.
I always bring us to legislation. Mrs. Ames.
Thank you, President Pratam Tuchel. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, seconded by, Mrs. Patrick. Rule call. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Tuchel.
Yes.
I would like to report to the committees. Anyone have to report? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Pratam Tuchel. Development has one item on the agenda tonight. It's the first reading of ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Walter Drain. This is the company that updates our classified ordinances every year, passes every year. I checked, last year, this was passed on January 27th, and this is, needs to be passed in time and fashion in order we can get the bill paid so we can get our ordinances updated, so that the broker-in-law asks to wait for three read rule and pass this tonight. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Anyone else wish to report? Mr. Crowell?
Safety Service Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It is item number one, which is a third reading, which is to amend chapter 1,501.10 of the criticized ordinances requiring maintenance of records by those performing fire equipment tests and inspections.[66.49][66.49]65.10. Again, this was just so that those records are reported better to the fire department. I'm asking for your favorable vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Mr. Patton?
Just thank you, President Pratam Tuchel. The Hencery Committee has two items on the agenda tonight. Number two is a street light to be installed at Johnson Keller Road, and number four, the ODOT will be inspecting bridges, bridges within the city limits of Chillicothe. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone else with any reports? Mrs. Gray?
Thank you, President Pratam Tuchel. The Human Resources Committee does not have any items on tonight's agenda, even though I would like to report that the committee did hold a number of meetings during the course of November and December, and we did make recommendations to and had those items disposed of by council. We do have one remaining item, which is legislation request 1,4168, which is a request for legislation to update the ordinances, update ordinance AD-12, which establishes the rates of pay and other economic benefits for non-classified employees and classified management-level employees for the city of Chillicothe. We are in the process of final review, and will address that issue at our next HR committee meeting for recommendation for the next council meeting. In reference to a couple of additional remaining items, the Human Resources Committee would like to make a request of the mayor, if at all possible, the status on the reposting of the transit clerk position. It's our understanding that the posting expired on January 19th. If we could get a status on that, and also if there's a possibility of any bumping rights that may be called into question for that position. The next, that we would like to request from HR, if at all possible, is a draft of personnel policies and procedures. It's the committee that the absence thereof of those particular policies and procedures is done more harm than good for operations of the daily, daily operations of the city, and we would like to review that draft, if at all possible, by March 15th. And also along with that draft, a timeline for finalization and implementation, if you would include that with the draft. And we would also like to request an audit, a position audit, of the Human Resources Director, the EEO officer, as well as the Civil Service Commission Secretary. And along with that, we would also like to request that by April 1st, a timeline for being able to look at updated position descriptions for each of the departments of the city. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else with any reports? Okay, this is Chair of the Finance Committee. There are three items on tonight's agenda. The Finance, item 2 is the second meeting of the ordinance to provide for the adoption of post-issueless compliance policies and procedures for tax-exempt obligations. Item 6 is to appropriate $776,752.39 to continue the handling of brought-forward purchase orders from 2014 and other brought-forward amounts in 2015. Item 7 is to authorize the mayor of Chillicothe to enter into a contract with Waterage Drain Company, and that's for ordinance, or updating our ordinance book. Mr. Feeney, are there any items here that we think should be waived or waived?
Yes, and action number five, I think should be Finance as well.
Oh, I got five. This is Development. Is there anything?
Oh. Yeah, I would support waiver of item 5 and 6 tonight, and I can talk to those through my presentation.
Okay, thank you. This is item 6, appropriate time with waiving three read rule. That brings us to reports of officials. Mayor Ferguson?
Thank you, Council President Tuchel. Obviously, the room's full tonight to support and especially your position. My apologies for not being at the last council meeting when this was brought up. As maybe you probably know, there's been a certified letter to reinstate Tamara Lo to that position, and that was due to finalizable, not finalization, but an update, and carryover amount to our budget, our 2014 budget going into 2015 budget. The city, when we do the budget, we have a specific number that we shoot for to reach a balanced budget. The layoffs included the EEO position, as well as four police officers and five people from the fire department. That was what it took to balance this budget, as the goals were stated. But more money carrying over into 2015, and the budget's kind of a funny thing with nothing, nothing is totally pinpointable until everything stops with the spending, with the non-spending that would be carried over from, excess from the budget to go into that carryover. So we don't really know, it's a, it's a projection game, as best we can determine what that carryover amount's going to be. And clear back when we started budget discussions, we targeted a $750,000 carryover for 2015. That was down from $900,000 the year before, but it was necessary because of the revenue reductions that the city experienced. So the, due to more funding being divided in 2015, than we had anticipated, it was natural to bring back that position, and that's why I issued the reinstatement letter on Friday that Tamara received on Saturday. So how this develops going forward is going to be how it develops going forward, but she is eligible for reinstatement at this point, due to an increase in the funding. So she was reduced as a part of funding, she's brought back to the part of increased funding. Secondly, there was a op-ed piece in the paper to, Sunday, regarding the position of Karen Huffman, and I'd like to address that a little bit. The duties that Ms. Huffman have picked up as a result of the elimination or the non, non-funding of the Assistant Chief's position are substantial. That Assistant Chief's position that is not funded in 2015 carries an hourly wage of $33.88 an hour. The increase to Ms. Huffman's pay is $4.42 an hour. So with all the benefits that go along with the Assistant Chief's position, that payment of taxpayer money is well over $100,000 a year. The $9,200 increase for Ms. Huffman to pick up those duties, and it creates a more streamlined and more efficient fire department, costs the taxpayers a lot less money. And quite frankly, I'll make that deal every day, as long as work can be absorbed, that's just more efficient utilization of taxpayer money. Pastor Troy Gray has orchestrated a Super Sunday event this Sunday at 1:00 after church services to meet on courthouse steps to pray for the city. This is circulating through social media pretty heavily right now. The police department will shut down Payne Street from Second Main to accommodate what we're expecting to be a huge crowd, and I invite everybody to participate in that. I see another segment of the audience tonight is likely represented by the fire department, and I'm sure they're here to talk about the levy. We made a decision to postpone the levy until the November ballot, because one of the criticisms that we had last time was we were rushing it. And I think that when we had our first levy meeting on August 27th, it was 10 weeks before the vote. Right now, we have 14 weeks before the vote, and I, we had 10 meetings, 10 public meetings during the campaign last year between September 16th and November 4th, to get our message out to the community. Obviously, we did not resonate effectively enough with the community to pass that levy. I think we need more time to address this. I think we need to focus on getting this levy passed this time, instead of rushing it onto the May ballot. So that's the direction that I went on that, and the council request for assignment that I made today on that. Lastly, the Heroin Partnership for Progress, the Heroin Partnership Program, as a state coalition to work with a selected county to give aid, state aid to fight against the heroin problem, came down and made a presentation through Judge Ador's office last Thursday, and they more or less interviewed the principals from Ross County. They told us when they came in the room, they were expecting to meet with five or six people, and it turned out it was closer to 80 people in the room that represented all aspects of the fight against heroin in Ross County. So I think just by the interest level that showed up at that meeting, they were truly impressed with that, and Judge Ador did a tremendous job in putting Ross County's best foot forward in that regard to hopefully have us selected out of the four counties that they're evaluating right now. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Ferguson. Autograph fee.
Thank you, President Pratam Tuchel. Comment on legislative items tonight, just a comment on item 5, which is under the first reading. This is just our annual HUD appropriation. This is all grant money which we would receive and, and in turn spend back out. This did not make it into the annual budget request. This is not any money that the city has to put forward of its own, and consequently, I would support waiver of the three read rule in passage tonight. Item number 6 is an annual ordinance that brings forward purchase orders, and in this ordinance, other brought-forward amounts from 2014. The one nuance this year with this ordinance is that it includes both purchase order amounts and the brought-forward amounts. In years past, at times, those brought-forward amounts weren't included in the budget that was voted on. The key here is that all of these amounts were appropriated last year, and in the case of purchase orders, they're essentially bills waiting to be paid, and the other items mostly, which are capital, were approved last year, and we are just re-appropriating that money for this year. So on that note, especially considering we have bills, we're waiting to pay our vendors, I would also support waiver of the three read rule on that ordinance. While the grand sum, obviously sent by $776,000, it is spread across multiple funds, and you'll see things in there, for example, a purchase order in safety levy capital for $157,000. There's probably two purchase orders, but one of which would be the squad that was approved last year. So that's why you see some sort of higher dollar amounts. The, the effect on the general fund, even though you've got the court sub-funds and the court general fund, I'm sorry, the general fund and the court sub-funds combined, the effect on the general fund is approximately $60,000. Which brings me to my year-end report, which I will be brief with, but we did, we were able to close out the year last week, those are books. I'm pleased to say that we've been able to close out the last couple of months, a little bit ahead of where we've been over the past, the previous month, so we're at a good pace. We close out both December and the year. As was mentioned earlier, the ending cash balance in the general fund, which is what we all pay such close attention to because of our fiscal caution status, was about $852,000. That's a big jump from a few years ago. It's also about $100,000 less than last year. So I definitely take positives and negatives in that. You can reduce that number by the $60,000 that I mentioned, brought-forward purchase orders, but it's a number that's been healthier for two years now, bearing in mind that the stated goal, the state of Ohio, the revised code, is something north of 1.3 million that they would like to see us carry forward. I'll start with the, briefly, just the bad news, if you will, with our budget, the revenue specifically. Income tax last year was down $150,000 from the previous year, and that's for all funds, and when you've got total income tax of over $11 million, it's not a big percent, but it's a step in the wrong direction. The only thing I will note from that is that we did run the amnesty program the previous year, which probably inflated revenue a little bit. So we'll keep a close eye on that. The other thing I'll note is that, you know, payroll servicers like ADP, at the end of the month, you either get this last payroll service on January 31st, I'm sorry, December 31st or January 1st. That can be a $100,000 swing. So we did finish down in income tax, the consequence to the general fund, in that case, it's about $100,000. One of the other huge differences was inheritance tax. You've heard me talk about this ad nauseam now for a couple of years, but this was the year, even though the law changed two years ago, this was the year that hit us. Last year, we received $363,000 in inheritance tax. This year, we received $12,000. All of that goes to the general fund. So that was basically our first realization of that law going into effect. And then, of course, 2013 was the last years of Safer and COPS grants. Those are all gone. We did have some positives. EMS revenue was up approximately $46,000 from the previous year. Building permits were up significantly. We've all seen the building in town, that was about a $55,000 increase. The courts brought in about $50,000 more than the previous year, and we also, for the second consecutive year, received a Bureau of Workers' Compensation rebate. This year was approximately $60,000 more than the previous year. The unfortunate thing with regard to the building permits and the workers' comp rebate is that those items fall more in the category of windfall than revenue we can count on, although I think we should see sustained building permit revenue this year. Overall, our operating revenue in the general fund is $700,000 less than it was a year ago, and that, that's a mark, that's a trend that I would imagine we've landed at. So pretty, pretty significant drop-off from year to year. But, that being said, to have a carryover like we did, like I said, $850,000 in the general fund is, is more positive than not, and we'll look to continue to grow back. Unless anybody has any questions on any of my report, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. Law Director's Office.
Thank you, President Pratam Tuchel. I am handing out, if you could take that, sorry, the annual report from the Law Director's Office. I apologize for not having it last time we had, as I'm supposed to give it on the first, being at the first of the year, that he said, uh, do it this time. The Law Director's Office closed 2,656 cases in the year 2014. A total of 739 criminal cases remain open that were filed in the year 2014. 138 ALS hearings were held, those stands for Automatic License Suspension Hearings, and that is up from 120 the previous year. 70 people entered the Criminal Diversion Program in 2014. Of those, 55 people completed the Criminal Diversion Program. It also includes individuals who are accepted in 2013 but didn't complete that program until 2014. Eight people were removed from the diversion program. 45 people entered the Criminal Diversion Program in 2014 but have not completed it yet, and 28 people applied but were not accepted into the Criminal Diversion Program. 74 people were enrolled into the Traffic Diversion Program in 2014, and that's up from 52 in the prior, in the previous year. 64 people completed the Traffic Diversion Program in 2014, and that includes individuals who were accepted in 2013 but didn't complete their program until 2014. Seven people have been accepted in 2014 and are awaiting completion. Six people were accepted into the program in 2014 but either failed to attend or removed from the program. Last year, the Law Director's Office gave 54 written legal opinions to law enforcement officers, and 26 written legal opinions to administration and council. Plus, many times, especially with law enforcement, they'll call us because they have all of mine and my assistants' phone numbers, and they'll call us on any shift if they have a question that pertains to any type of issue they might have on the call. As far as pending litigation, 28 cases are defended in pending litigation, and that's up from 13 in the year 2013, and in 2014, 12 of those cases were closed. Of those total cases defended and closed, it includes cases carried over from 2013, and we have cases in the following. One case was defended and litigated in the Ohio Supreme Court. 10 municipal court cases have been filed. Of those, we've gotten 14 judgments affirmed, one reversal, and six open cases. We had two Ohio Civil Rights Commission cases with no probable cause found. We have one ongoing civil matter involving the Design Review Board, and also four that are under the umbrella of our Public Entities Risk Services of Ohio, which we want to talk about later. We have three civil service matters unresolved. We have 16 bankruptcy cases filed with the bankruptcy board. The Law Director's Office files claims on behalf of the Water Department and Income Tax Department whenever there's an outstanding debt owed. Last year, we prepared 115 ordinances that were passed, 16 resolutions prepared and passed, and that number does not reflect the number of ordinances and resolutions that were prepared that were not passed and were tabled. We have two workers' compensations being heard in the Ross County Common Police Court. The Law Director's Office did continue to, discontinued the collection of overdue water and income tax payments back in 2013. However, we continue to prepare and file documents relating to the payment release of outstanding water and/or income tax-related needs. And beginning in the year 2014, we started working with the income department again, the income tax department in regards to communicating and filing charges and garnishments against individuals who either did not file or pay their taxes. During the calendar year 2014, 147 complaints and 32 garnishments were filed. There were 55 dismissals due to the accounts being paid. Last year, the Law Director's Office hosted two OBI training seminars. The first one was COPS in Courts, and was held at the Ross County Service Center on January 10th, prosecuting the drug driver, which was training for judges and prosecutors, was held at the same location on September 26th. We were able to bring in experts from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, and they were provided at no cost to the city or the attendees. Each seminar was well-reputed and provided valuable education to law enforcement officers, prosecutors, and judges. The Law Director's Office received and responded to numerous public records requests. We've also provided assistance with public records requests presented to our other city offices, including the Police Department, Fire Department, Safety Service Department, Human Resources, and the Civil Service Office. That concludes my annual report for 2014. However, I would like to clear up some misinformation that was presented at the last meeting. At my office, employees, four Assistant Law Directors and myself, we are all part-time employees, and we are the only attorneys that are paid out of the general fund of the city. No outside attorneys are hired to conduct city business. When outside attorneys are brought in, it's because there's a claim made to our insurance carrier, and whenever, if you're aware of how you deal with your insurance company, when you make the claim, the insurance carrier will tell you how you're going to present their claim, so they will always tell us what attorney they're going to assign to our case based on what it is that we're being sued for. It does not mean that we don't have any more contact with that case. I have worked with the outside attorneys that have been paid fire insurance carrier. I have attended depositions. I have helped discovery with interrogatories, and I will sit second chair if the case ever goes to trial, so that I can help them pick out a fair juror from our citizenry. Finally, if you notice that the first five things that I talked about on the annual report, most of them have to do with criminal prosecution. The Law Director's Office is the last part of the law enforcement system, and as such, we consider ourselves to be law enforcement, and we don't, we feel like we're a part of that group, and there's been some criticism about why we don't negotiate their contracts. It would be extreme conflict for the Law Director's Office to do that, considering how closely that we work with law enforcement. And historically, my office has not done that. In fact, I think you can go back probably several, several Law Directors before myself, and that's never been done. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of what this office does and how we do that, and if there's any other questions that somebody might have, our office is always open. And thank you, President Pratam. That was the end of what I have to say.
Thank you. Long walk. Thank you.
An inheritance tax. This year, we received $12,000. All of that goes to the general fund. So that was basically our first realization of that law going into effect. And then, of course, 2013 was the last years of SAFER and COPS grants. Those are all gone. We did have some positives. EMS revenue was up approximately $46,000 from the previous year. Building permits were up significantly. We've all seen the building in town. That was about a $55,000 increase. The courts brought in about $50,000 more than the previous year. And we also, for the second consecutive year, received a Bureau of Workers' Compensation rebate. This year was approximately $60,000 more than the previous year. The unfortunate thing with regard to the building permits and the workers' comp rebate is that those items fall more in the category of windfall than revenue we can count on, although I think we should see sustained building permit revenue this year. Overall, our operating revenue in the general fund was $700,000 less than it was a year ago. And that's a mark, that's a trend that I would imagine we've landed at. So, pretty significant drop-off from year to year. But, that being said, to have a carryover like we did, like I said, $850,000 in the general fund is more positive than not, and we'll look to continue to grow back. Unless anybody has any questions on any of my report, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Law Director's office.
Thank you, President Fred T. Tratchell. I am handing out, if you could take that. Sorry. The annual report from the Law Director's Office. I apologize for not having it last time we had. I'm supposed to give it on the first, being at the first of the year, that he said, "I'd go off." Do it this time. The Law Director's Office closed 2,656 cases in the year 2014. A total of 739 criminal cases remain open that were filed in the year 2014. 138 ALS hearings were held. Those stands for Automatic License Suspension Hearings. And that is up from 120 the previous year. Seventy people entered the Criminal Diversion Program in 2014. Of those, 55 people completed the Criminal Diversion Program. It also includes individuals who are accepted in 2013 but didn't complete that program until 2014. Eight people were removed from the diversion program. Forty-five people entered the Criminal Diversion Program in 2014 but have not completed it yet. And 28 people applied but were not accepted into the Criminal Diversion Program. Seventy-four people were enrolled into the Traffic Diversion Program in 2014, and that's up from 52 in the previous year. Sixty-four people completed the Traffic Diversion Program in 2014, and that includes individuals who were accepted in 2013 but didn't complete their program until 2014. Seven people have been accepted in 2014 and are awaiting completion. Six people were accepted into the program in 2014 but either failed to attend or were removed from the program. Last year, the Law Director's Office gave 54 written legal opinions to law enforcement officers and 26 written legal opinions to administration and council. Plus, many times, especially with law enforcement, they'll call us because they have all of mine and my assistants' phone numbers, and they'll call us on any shift if they have a question that pertains to any type of issue they might have on the call. As far as pending litigation, 28 cases are defended in pending litigation, and that's up from 13 in the year 2013. And in 2014, 12 of those cases were closed. Of those total cases defended and closed, it includes cases carried over from 2013, and we have cases in the following. One case was defended and litigated in the Ohio Supreme Court. Ten municipal court cases have been filed. Of those, we've gotten 14 judgments affirmed, one reversal, and six open cases. We had two Ohio Civil Rights Commission cases with no probable cause found. We have one ongoing civil matter involving the Design Review Board. And also four that are under the umbrella of our Public Entities Risk Services of Ohio, which we're going to talk about later. We have three civil service matters unresolved. We have 16 bankruptcy cases filed with the bankruptcy board. The Law Director's Office files claims on behalf of the Water Department and Income Tax Department whenever there's an outstanding debt owed. Last year, we prepared 115 ordinances that were passed, 16 resolutions prepared and passed. And that number does not reflect the number of ordinances and resolutions that were prepared that were not passed and were tabled. We have two workers' compensations being heard in the Ross County Common Police Court. The Law Director's Office did continue to discontinue the collection of overdue water and income tax payments back in 2013. However, we continue to prepare and file documents relating to the payment release of outstanding water and/or income tax-related needs. And beginning in the year 2014, we started working with the Income Department again, the Income Tax Department, in regards to communicating and filing charges and garnishments against individuals who either did not file or pay their taxes. During the calendar year 2014, 147 complaints and 32 garnishments were filed. There were 55 dismissals due to the accounts being paid. Last year, the Law Director's Office hosted two OBI training seminars. The first one was Cops in Courts and was held at the Ross County Service Center on January 10th. And Prosecuting the Drug Driver, which was training for judges and prosecutors, was held at the same location on September 26th. We were able to bring in experts from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, and they were provided at no cost to the city or the attendees. Each seminar was well-attended and had provided valuable education to law enforcement officers, prosecutors, and judges. The Law Director's Office received and responded to numerous public records requests. We've also provided assistance with public records requests presented to our other city offices, including the Police Department, Fire Department, Safety Service Department, Human Resources, and the Civil Service Office. That concludes my annual report for 2014. However, I would like to clear up some misinformation that was presented at the last meeting. At my office, employees, four Assistant Law Directors and myself, we are all part-time employees, and we are the only attorneys that are paid out of the general fund of the city. No outside attorneys are hired to conduct city business. When outside attorneys are brought in, it's because there's a claim made to our insurance carrier. And whenever, if you're aware of how you deal with your insurance company, when you make the claim, the insurance carrier will tell you how you're going to present their claim. So they will always tell us what attorney they're going to assign to our case based on what it is that we're being sued for. It does not mean that we don't have any more contact with that case. I have worked with the outside attorneys that have been paid by our insurance carrier. I have attended depositions. I have helped discovery with interrogatories. And I will sit second chair if the case ever goes to trial so that I can help them pick out a fair juror from our citizenry. Finally, if you notice that the first five things that I talked about on the annual report, most of them have to do with criminal prosecution. The Law Director's Office is the last part of the law enforcement system. And as such, we consider ourselves to be law enforcement. We don't, we feel like we're a part of that group, and there's been some criticism about why we don't negotiate their contracts. It would be extreme conflict for the Law Director's Office to do that, considering how closely that we work with law enforcement. And historically, my office has not done that. In fact, I think you can go back probably several, several Law Directors before myself, and that's never been done. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of what this office does and how we do that. And if there's any other questions that somebody might have, our office is always open. And thank you, President Fred T. Tratchell. And that's the end of what I have to say.
Thank you. Long live the law. Now, the report of Council President, I normally have a report. However, I would like to thank Officer Newsom for being here tonight, and thank you for what you do. I'd also like to thank Chief Creed and his contingent of firefighters up there. Thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do. And these guys can save your life. They do a great job. With that, I would like to bring this to audience participation. As a reminder, you step to the microphone, give your name, address. Council Rule 21 limits each speaker to five minutes and each subject to 15. I will let you know when you may have 30 seconds left unless you finish before that. Thank you very much. You may have a speaker.
My name is Terry Williams, and I reside at 371 Pliley Lane. I'm a proud resident of and worker in the First Ward here in Chillicothe. Many of us are here tonight to support EEO, to stand up for what makes Chillicothe excellent. And there are many of us who are very happy today at the news that our EEO director will be returned to her job very soon. What is frustrating in this mess is to know that she had to be removed from her job to begin with, that she was summarily dismissed, according to reports in the media, due to lack of funds. And now, after we hear an explanation that $750,000 was not enough money, but $850,000 was plenty of money, she's being recalled to her job. And what's frustrating is to know that there's a person involved in this mess. There is a person who had to pack up her personal belongings, who had to clear out her office of 20 years, who had to move everything that she had out and away, and go through a public separation from the city, who is now being recalled. And that's very frustrating, particularly to those of us who know what it's like to have a parent or a friend or a family member recalled to work. It's a very stressful position indeed. What's also very frustrating out of this is when we begin to ask questions about why our EEO director was laid off to begin with, we've gotten quite a few interesting answers. Our EEO director has made it clear that she was laid off after a Civil Service Commission hearing, in which she spoke out against what she believed to be an illegal hiring practice on part of this city. Then on November 17th, she spoke out against what was the illegal hire, in her opinion, as EEO director, of a woman by the name of Julie Clifton, who is serving currently in the Transit Department as transit clerk. I went to our HR director, who happens to also be our Civil Service Secretary, who happens to also currently be the EEO Fair Housing Officer for the city, to ask about minutes for this particular meeting. And this is what I was provided with. For those who are unable to see, I was provided with, oh, about seven lines of notes. It seems there are no minutes for this public hearing. There are no minutes on file for the Civil Commission for that particular date. No minutes at all. So, I asked for the minutes that corresponded to the next regular meeting, because shortly there had to be something in that particular set of minutes about not having minutes from the previous month. Sadly, there's nothing in there, in the December minutes. Nothing about passing the November minutes and approving them, nothing about approving the October minutes, which apparently were never approved, because we don't have minutes for them. No information at all. So I go to the January minutes, there. And the January minutes tell the same story. There's no approval of the previous minutes. So now we're left with three months of Civil Service Commission hearings with no approved minutes. We're left with a critical meeting, a critical meeting in which our EEO director claimed she stood up for fair hiring practices here in the city, and then was retaliated against by receiving a firing notice afterwards, that we don't have any information for. And then we begin to go back and look through previous minutes, and we find that even as far back as March, as far back as March in the Civil Service Commission, our EEO director was advocating for a fair hiring practice in this position, which she felt was unfairly hired into. And now we find out, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Gray, that there's been a posting of this position, because we should have posted it to begin with, but we didn't do that. It was appointed under a temporary provision, a 120-day provision, and then we didn't post the position after that temporary provision expired. So now we're posting it quite a long ways afterwards, in an issue that's clearly a problem for the Civil Service Commission. Because of all of this work, because of all of these problems, it appears to me, as a member of the citizenry, that our EEO director might have a claim, that her claim might have some traction, that she may be going back into a position with an administration that's openly hostile to her. And I hate to have to say that, standing here.
Mr. Williams, you have 30 seconds.
But in this place, we have got to understand that keeping EEO, keeping this person in this position, is not just about the position now, it's become about something much more. We're going to keep asking questions, and hopefully we get some answers around what exactly it was that caused the mayor to dismiss this woman from her position, even though he had $750,000 to keep an $85,000 position, to dismiss this position due to lack of funds. I hope counsel will join us in asking those questions and seeking those answers, because we will find those answers, no matter how long we must seek. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, my name, my name is Robert Hitchens, I reside at 446 Johnson Road here in Chillicothe. Also employed within the city limits down on 101 South MacArthur Street with Annexa Fasser. Pro tem President Tratchell to all the elected officials here. I just come standing to, not only to echo what Mr. Williams has just said, but to add a few other things. I may have more information that we, as a family, and all of you know that Tamara, my sister, and I stood here on a few occasions and said that she can fight her own battles. Unfortunately, she's had to get representation to fight her own battles. To our Law Director Rutherford, I think she was alluding to some of the comments that maybe Tamara had said, that maybe she was misspoken in some of them, but surely, I think all of us can agree that we continue to have issues, that we have to bring lawyers into the city to deal with situations that are personnel-related. It's totally unacceptable. I said on multiple occasions that we became a laughing stock regionally, and in many cases outside of the Midwest, the people that I discuss and hear from on a regular basis what's going on in Chillicothe. What's sad is that today, we get a press release. That is a facade. It's an embarrassment. It makes me wonder, did we hire out a consultant on public relations? Because Tamara wasn't let go because of money, and she wasn't brought back because of money. She was brought back because, stand up for EEO. She was brought back because of some of the private meetings that were held with the mayor. She was brought back because of some of the discussions with clergy and others in the community that stood up. She was brought back because some of the council members, and I applaud you, have put resolutions on the table that may come forth. This situation didn't start with the budget. It started over two years ago, in 2013, and maybe before that. And I don't want to come here week after week and have to bring them out. An attorney may have to. The real fact is, you do not, sir, want to have a civil service hearing on Friday, because these facts will start coming out. Tamara has been retaliated against. It just didn't start with the issue of civil service and that job down in transit. I sat in private meetings with the mayor, and I know some of these situations. It's a shame. Just call a spade what it is. It's a spade. If you have a problem with the person, tell them, and try to eliminate it. We have this whole issue of a levy, and I wanted to pass for firefighters. It's a shame that we didn't hit the street running for firefighters and police. But what does EEO have to do with a levy that didn't pass? What I read in the paper was, if the levy didn't pass, there would have to be cuts, there would be stations closed, and there would be tough cuts. But who got cut, other than a 21-year-old, a 21-year employee, and some firefighters and police officers, that I still don't have the facts right of who got cut and who didn't get cut? It's a facade when you put in the paper to try to grandstand in front of the community and a regional audience to say that this thing is okay. Sir, it is not okay. This fight will continue. For those of you that watch, gentlemen, you know that there was a fight, and there was marches. We don't need to march, because we march right here every Monday until we get better leadership in this community. I told each one of you two weeks ago, I hold you accountable, and I still will hold you accountable. This is a facade. She was wrongfully treated, the way she was let go, not even the dearest enough to have a decent meeting, other than to hand someone a letter. She was mistreated by being moved to the transit building, then told that it was for her safety, after she was laughed at on WBNS News about a situation with the former police chief. But now, all of a sudden, it's better for you to be down there, down there without telephones for over 30 days? This is the stuff that the citizens need to know. This wasn't about a budget. Had nothing to do with the budget. It had to do with not wanting the position or the person. We have got to position back. That's process one. Now, process two has to be, take care of the person that was in the position. Thank you very much.
Do you want to have anything to say?
My name is Ryan Wade. I reside at 682 North Malone Road. I am also president of the Local Firefighter Association.
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you give your name and your address again slowly? I'm sorry.
That's all right. Ryan Wade, 682 North Malone Road.
Thank you, sir.
I'm president of the Local Firefighter Association.
Thank you.
On Friday, council members, mayor, received a proposal for a fire levy. I'm here tonight to urge council to consider this fire levy. This levy is very much needed by the fire department. Currently, our minimum staffing is at eight. Those of you that attended our fire ops back in October know what that means. Know that eight people is not enough. We're currently, we're currently running short on our fire trucks, we're running short on our medic trucks. We just don't have enough people. We're sending out more calls to mutual aid than we were before. And as you guys know, that leads to decreases in EMS revenue, calls that we're not able to take. Our staffing levels around here have always been low, but now they're dangerously low. And it's dangerous for the citizens, and it's dangerous for us. One big thing that I'd like to pass on with this levy is the SAFER grant opens on February 9th. Those not familiar, the SAFER grant pays for firefighters for a two-year period. And then that's all based on need, and there's all kinds of factors going into application. Priorities of the SAFER grant, rehiring layoff firefighters. We have that. Retention of firefighters facing imminent layoffs. That's a second priority. And then third priority is hiring new firefighters. One big piece of that puzzle is having a plan in place to sustain after you receive a grant. Putting this levy on the ballot in May will give us a plan to sustain. Will make our application for a SAFER grant look that much better. I sat in on a lecture from a chief up in Sandusky, Ohio, was a FEMA grant reader. He read SAFER grants for years for FEMA, and these are the things that he pointed out to us. Those are the things, the things I look for, are the, be able to sustain and the need. We have the need, we don't have the plan to sustain, and that's what we need right now. One of the drawbacks I've heard about the levy is the money doesn't come in until January 1st. Projected award start date for the SAFER grant, June 1st. And they, the final award will be handed out September 30th. So, while a successful levy would not, money would not be seen until the 1st of January, SAFER grant money would be seen this summer, which means we'll be able to get those guys in, get them hired. It'll get us moving towards meeting NFPA standards that are another big element in the success of your SAFER grant. Available funding for this year, $340 million, and it's projected to have 300 awards. One of the other things that I've heard about the SAFER grant is that SAFER grants are one of the big cities now. Well, in 2013, Beaverton, Ohio, received a SAFER grant. Wausau, Ohio, received a SAFER grant. Steubenville, Ohio, received a SAFER grant. Marion, Ohio, received a SAFER grant. These grants are out there, they're based on need, they're based on plans in place. That's what these are based on. They're not based on how the city is. These are comparable cities. I mean, these cities are our size or smaller and are receiving SAFER grants. So SAFER grant will give us a two-year start on this levy. These positions are paid for for a two-year period. And I think that getting this levy on in the May ballot is a big step forward in that SAFER grant process.
Mr. Wade, you have 30 seconds.
We were told back in December that the levy was going on beginning of May. Here we are, approaching the deadline again, and nothing's been done. So that's why you guys will receive that on Friday, and I hope that you guys will consider that and get it in committee so we can hammer this thing out. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak?
My name is Tamara Lowe, 602 Garden Drive, Chillicothe. I just wanted to come this evening and just briefly address the situation as it stands with the equal employment opportunity position in the city of Chillicothe, a position that I occupied for nearly 21 years. I apologize for my late arrival. It isn't my intention to be disrespectful to this council. However, I just left a three-hour school board meeting. I remember the Chillicothe City Schools Board of Education, a very long meeting, very productive meeting. I just wanted to say, I don't know what was said before I came here, that someone had texted me and said that Mayor Jack Eversen was glad to welcome Tamara back, or welcoming Tamara back. I find that insulting. I received an email earlier today in which Jack Eversen, a lengthy email that was sent to city council members, he repeatedly referred me as Tamara. My name is Tamara Lowe. Jack Eversen and I are not friends. I'm not a child, and I'm not a dog. So, sir, please refer to me as Mrs. Lowe, and I'll refer to you as Mr. Eversen. I appreciate that. I just wanted to take the opportunity to come here and stand before you today with the members of Stand Up Chillicothe, to say that no matter what, I will continue to stand. Whether I come back to work for the city of Chillicothe, I will continue to stand. I will continue to stand, because I will not sit down, I will not lay down, and I will not be knocked down by bullies in this community. I will continue to stand up and fight corruption, malfeasance, and bullying. Now, in the budget cuts, or alleged budget deficits, I was told, or my understanding, that Mayor Jack Eversen believed that we could no longer afford my position, that we could no longer afford EES. I'm here to tell you that we can no longer afford 11 more months of his malfeasance, corruption, and bullying, and what it is doing to this community. And again, whether I work for this city or not, whether I do it as an employee, I will do it respectfully, and I will do it by the books, or whether I am doing it as a private citizen, I will continue to fight for what is right. For the last three years, I have seen numerous examples of malfeasance under his administration. I have made reports to Mayor Jack Eversen of mismanagement, misappropriation, and abuse of housing funds under his administration. What was my reward? I've been bullied. I've been mocked. I've been laughed at. I've been moved. I've been ridiculed. And finally, he thought the last draw was to hand me on November 17th, a layoff notice discharging me from my duties from the city of Chillicothe. No conversation, no succession plan, no exit interview. He didn't collect my keys. He had no further conversation with me after November 17th, immediately following the Civil Service Commission meeting, at which I spoke out about an illegal hire of a transit clerk. Now, I have asked for minutes from that meeting and have been told that those meeting minutes don't exist. But again, without making, I know your time is long, my evening has been long, I just want to thank all of you for your work. I want to thank everyone that's come here tonight to stand up for truth and justice. And like I said, I will continue to stand. I won't be knocked down. I will continue to stand. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on another issue?
Hello, council members and, I can name the president, Trutzel. My name's Officer Christopher McGowan with the Chillicothe Police Department. And my address is going to be twenty-eight North Payne Street. Just want to formally introduce myself. I'm now the new, I guess, chairperson for the city police department. I took the position effective eight o'clock this morning. And sorry, didn't know about this until six thirty tonight, so. I don't have anything to say, but there's a really nice crowd here. So my name's Officer McGowan. I'm currently on day shift, so. If you guys have seen me around, I'm in one of the old chargers right now. So I know Mr. Patrick a little bit. We worked together a couple of years back when I was injured. So if anybody has any questions, please get ahold of me and look forward to trying to work with everyone and maybe try to forge a little bit better relationship than we've had in the past year or so. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Jeff Capet, Chillicothe resident.
Say again.
Jeff Capet, Chillicothe resident. A longtime supporter of Mr. Eversen, way back from the very beginning. I went to one of his campaign fundraisers. I was very impressed with him. I like the idea of a businessman running government. I think it's a great idea. If we gave everybody everything they wanted, we'd end up with a nineteen trillion dollar debt, which is what we have at the federal level. We have a big problem with government these days. We've got to control our spending. And I, you know, I remember this Sir Robert Bond incident where he was terminated and I thought, well, his rhetoric just appalled me because he acted like he was entitled to his job. He was a public servant. You serve at the discretion of the people. You're not entitled to a job for life. It just doesn't make any sense to me. If it was ran like a business, we wouldn't have these problems. In the public sector, we don't even have unions anymore hardly. We just have a few, but they compete with the communist Chinese and whoever. But at the public level, we got these public unions that it's hard to get rid of them and they're very demanding. And I just, I like Mr. Eversen's fiscal conservatism and the way he presented his views during his campaign. And I supported him one hundred percent, still do to this very day. Thank you, Mr. Eversen. I wish you were running again because I vote for you. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Hey, that brings us to.
Thank you, President Protem. Two items. The first is a second request for a special committee to implement a strategic planning process specifically here to city council progress within the next month or two. And the second would be a request to go back to what we did in two thousand and thirteen regarding our budget process and being able to start that budget process earlier in the year. We weren't able to do that this past year and I think that it caused more problems than we should have had. I'd like for us to be able to start that process with the council involvement at least by August of September.
Okay. Your initial request needs to be made to administration, it's an administration decision, not a legislative decision.
The first was for council and it's not administrative. That's for council, strategic planning process for council, not administrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you, President Protem. I just have a question. The rehiring of, calling back whatever you want to say of Mrs. Lowe, the money isn't appropriated. We will need a committee assignment to vote on that, correct? Okay? And refilling that position is basically the same cost of calling back a police officer, correct?
It's considerably less.
Not according to the auditor.
These police officers were primarily being taken from thirty-three to twenty-nine through attrition. There's no unemployment clause, there's no buyout.
What I'm saying is the salary for the EEO person is basically the same as the salary for the officer that was laid off.
Right. But there's unemployment and there's buyout that is in the budget.
Well, all I'm trying to say is if we have to choose, personally, I want a police officer back just for the fact we had another shooting down on Seventh Street. And that, you know, the officers, it's serious when that happens, the state highway patrol was called in to help because we didn't have enough officers on the street? That's serious to me.
Well, you know, I considered that since you asked the question. And I think that it was during some conversations with some community leaders, it was brought to a good point, that the police department and the fire department, numbers are reduced. The EEO department, numbers are limited. And the EEO primarily, when you look at the work that's done and the daily amount of work that's done, and a lot of our jobs is in prevention, is preventing things that never happen. And if we can have an EEO person at work up front, and I'm not placing this load at your feet, but to prevent problems, it never gets to the police department and never gets to the fire department.
But right now, the way things stand, we don't have, you know, forefront of EEO on the street level. So we need to get more officers and more firefighters. I'm just saying, if you look at priorities, to me, it's safety first. Nothing against the EEO position, I'm just saying, when you've got shootings, I want an officer.
Well, like I said, that one officer joins the force, it probably doesn't affect.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Neal.
I'd just like to encourage putting the street levy on the ballot for May. We talked quite a bit and I thought that was the original intention. I know that we're down to the wire now, but I think if we let this go to November, we'd lost a whole construction cycle. We should be in the planning stages if we knew that the levy had passed. I think the citizens are ready to pass the street levy. And I'd like to urge that we reconsider and put that on the May ballot. What do I need to do to move that forward?
I need to get a legislative request, mayor's office, so I can issue an assignment to do that. And we could get that on the agenda for next week. Or, yeah, next week as opposed to our next regular council session, because that's after the date that it's due. That's what we need to get that. So we can get it on, it's a rush job, we can get it on the agenda, lay the rules, and pass it on first night if we so desire to. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Pearl.
As important as the streets are, I would also like to ask that we consider putting that fire levy on there. The closing of those two stations is costing people, you know, a lot. It's, we're going to lose people's lives just because we cannot fund this. I think the public, keeping them separate, allowing them to evaluate both on their own merit this time, would be a fair way to put them both out before the public. As the fire department brought up, if we're able to put this before the voters, we might be able to get these competitive grants. Those competitive grants would, you know, help us get our officers back sooner. I think if we wait till November, we're going to miss that opportunity to save lives. And I would just like to see us take a run at it. I know it's a rush and it's going to be a tough sell no matter what, but I would like to ask that we make that request.
I don't have a problem with the legislation being last minute. It's the, what we have to do is be able to campaign, make it happen. That's what, once it's on there, getting it on the agenda is not a rush job, but it is anyhow, but by nature.
I know. It's an order to strike.
But here's the person, here's a person who has two officers.
Yeah, these are not easy ones to write either because you have to have the wording correct, because if the wording is incorrect and you put it on the ballot, it will invalidate anything that's spoken on.
Sing legislation in parallel.
We can on that. The audience can change on that if they please. But the issue is going to be, I have to change firefighters' side, or the firefighters' side.
Well, that's true because we have.
It's going to be entirely.
It's staying in fire. Last time, this would just be a fire.
Can I comment on that? I've drafted language to change the past resolution to do that. So ninety percent of the work is done, but it needs to be verified by your office, obviously. And by council, it has to go through them as well. But we have, we have sat down and done a draft proposal for that.
I was going to say, it's the most time-consuming thing we did like the last time we were doing that. It's just because that, I mean, we sweat the details because if you put it on wrong, it doesn't matter what happens. If you pass it, it's still going to be invalidated.
Trust me, we understand. And that's why we took the time to go ahead and do that.
I tried to do them at the last minute because of that, because everybody in my office reads it.
And I understand it's time-consuming, but every day the firefighters are out there risking their lives, putting their lives on the line. So a little bit of time on all of our parts to protect my firefighters, because I'm charged with that responsibility to protect these firefighters. I'm charged. The citizens in this community are safe. And I have to have the tools and the people to do that. I've got the tools pretty much, but I don't have the people to do it. And so that's why I'm asking that council would consider this and puts us on the agenda just like Councilman Pearl said, because it is very important for not only my firefighters, but for this community as well.
Well, I applaud you. I mean, I'm trying to make you think I didn't want you to do it. I'm just telling you how much we sweat it because at the last minute, if you miss something, it's very.
I understand, but if we don't get it through this round, November will be political fodder. We all know that. And then you're, another year into this and we've missed another SAFER grant cycle and we're now into two thousand and seventeen before we can fix the problems that we have in this community. And waiting that long, doing some work for a week to save another year, year and a half of trouble and issues is well worth the effort in my mind. And I think that most people on council would agree with that hopefully.
Chief Green, do you ask for two percent?
Point two percent.
Point two percent?
Point two percent, correct.
Is that enough?
Yes.
Is that enough to get three squads on the street?
Yes. Yep. That is enough to get three squads on the street and also hire four civilian dispatchers. And we can look at combined dispatch with the police department as we've talked about for years. And if we're able to do that, we can free up some police officers as well. But that would be our share of a combined dispatch with the police department. So, and, and we would also see an increase in EMS revenue, which then goes into general fund, which could be used for other places within the city where we need that money spent.
Whatever the chain of command it has to go to, whether it has to go to me, then to the law director, if you take it directly to the law director, that'll save some time.
I can get it drafted down.
We'll do that and we'll pursue that. Try to get it on the agenda for next month, the call is special for me.
Yeah, I've got a draft of it with me, so I can share that with them as well if you guys are interested.
The street levy also. Seven eleven. Mr. Bond.
Thank you, President Protem. And I brought this up and asked it last time when we were talking about one or two. And I don't have the answer. I don't know if the law director got the answer. It's my opinion. You cannot have two income tax levies on the ballot at the same time. You cannot leave the number open. We're point one-six, aren't we, Mr. Auditor? We can't put, we're going to raise it point two and say what it is. You have to say we're going to raise it point two to, from one point six to one point eight. If you have two on the ballot, you don't know what the final number could possibly be because one could pass or two could pass or neither could pass. This is a very layman interpretation of that statute. And I asked this six, seven months ago and we talked about possibly having two. So before we go through all that work and determine do we want these two on there, be it, be aware, there's a strong possibility, at least in my mind, that you cannot put two on there. You could put an income tax in a property because you can close both those numbers. But I don't believe you could put two income tax on the ballot because you cannot close the number. Really, we need to look at that before we get in there. It's a shame to get that on there, pass them, and we can't do it. So just be aware of that. That's, this was my understanding back seven, eight months ago and I've heard a couple of times then. We didn't go the two-way, so I never got the answer. So right now, although it's last minute, I think we need to get that answer before we go on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Did we get an answer on that double levy? I mean, did we have any kind of inclination on that from last time?
No, we did not. We didn't go that way.
Okay.
How about your community?
Mr. President, Protem, Trutzel, I only have a filing reminder to remind the council members from the title Ethics Commission. And I put, copied this in packets, so be sure to pay attention to that. And it has the website for the Ethics Commission where you can get the financial disclosure statements. But they are very strict. There's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for late filing. And they've asked me to be sure to remind you of these things. Also, I will remind whoever is sworn in as our new president of council that that person needs to. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Pray this to new businesses. Anyone have new businesses? Mrs. Ames.
Thank you, President Protem. Council members, all received from Linda Fisher, the mayor's secretary, appointments to boards of different, in the city, that we've been asked to confirm. Don Ellfrick to continue on board of zoning deals. Daniel Rogers, Convention and Facility Authority. Mike Northrup and Annie Frizzell to continue on Design Review Board. Nate Blosser to serve on the Justice Theater Board. Wayne Coats, Walt Smith, Teresa Herstein, and Gary McFadden to continue serving on Tree Commission. Robert Barnhart and Jeff Whalen to continue serving on Parks and Rec. Julie Wyden to continue serving on Planning Commission. Charles Holm to continue serving on the Ross County Health District. And at this time, I'd like a motion to approve these appointments.
Motion by Mrs. Ames, second by Mrs. Gray. Hookel. Ames.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
And I'd also like to thank all of those folks who are volunteering for the city. They mean a lot. A lot of things wouldn't happen without those folks. Anyone else have any new business?
I have one item that bothered me for a while. Our city increases in size from about, from twenty-two thousand to at least twice that because of our shopping here in the city. And our businesses collect a lot of sales tax. Well, we get very little sales tax, but if it wasn't for the city collecting sales tax or having these businesses, the county wouldn't get that money. And I believe it's only fair that this body, this city, get sales tax to some degree. Legislation has to change. That's what infuriates a lot of our regular taxpayers who do pay income tax to the city, that we have an immense amount of people run through our city that pay sales tax and we don't get that much to run this. This would help us with our firefighters, our police, and everything else we have around here. I believe that we need to find out what legislation has to be changed to make that happen because the people that are paying income tax don't want to vote on a tax levy. If it's only their taxes that are taxed, they want the sales tax. And I can appreciate that. I do believe we need to make that effort to find out how we can change legislation. Thank you. Anyone else? That brings us to legislation. I'm sorry, we have a council assignment. Council assignment.
That brings us to legislation. I'm sorry, we have the council assignment. I got one. Council assignment 1501, Parks and Recreation Committee, a request for legislation to accept an insurance check of $19,655.25 to replace roof damages by wind. Assignment 1502, Community Parents Committee, a request for legislation to allow the mayor to enter into a contract with Walter H. Drain Company to prepare 48 sets of replacement pages for the Chillicothe Codified Ordinance. Assignment 1503, Safety Services Committee, request for legislation authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise, bid, and enter into contract for annual supplies, maintenance, and repairs of equipment for fiscal year 2015. Assignment 1504, Safety Service Committee, a request for legislation to accept the David Mead Mass and Trust Grant to CFD in the amount of $1,000 for safety educational materials for schools. Assignment 1505, Finance Committee, a request for legislation bringing certain POs forward from 2015. And Assignment 1506, Finance Committee, a request for legislation to appropriate various funds from unappropriated HUD funds. Now, that brings us to legislation. Item one, third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 1501.10 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring emergency, third reading. Roll call. Ames.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Trussell. Yes. Item two, second reading of an ordinance authorizing the installation of a street bike at the intersection of Johnson Road and Keller Road, second reading. Item three, second reading of an ordinance providing for the adoption of post-issuance compliance policies and procedures for tax-exempt obligations, second reading. Item four, second reading of an ordinance consenting to proposal number 97103 submitted by the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform bridge inspections within the city limits and declaring emergency, second reading. Item five, first reading of an ordinance appropriating housing and urban development funds from the unappropriated HUD fund in the amount of $75,000 and declaring emergency, first reading. Mrs. Ames.
I'm going to waive my three-minute rule.
Second by Mrs. Gray. Roll call and motion? Ames.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Trussell. Yes. Roll call on the ordinance? Ames.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Trussell. Yes. That passes. Item seven, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Walter H. Drain Company and declaring emergency, first reading.
I'm going to waive your three-minute rule, please.
Second by Mrs. Gray. Roll call and motion? Ames.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Trussell. Yes. Roll call and ordinance? Ames.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Trussell. Yes. Next, legislation, we have a motion for adjournment. Mr. Vaughn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second by Mrs. Neal. Roll call? Ames.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.